Good morning, ladies and gentlemen.
People excited.
Lot of energy in the room this morning. That's great. Once again, good morning, ladies and gentlemen.
Good morning.
Good morning. I am David Vitale, President of the Chicago Board of Education. On behalf of my fellow board members, I want to welcome you to the regularly, regular meeting of the Chicago Board of Education. On January 23rd, 2013, we are holding this month's meeting at the Board Chambers, 125 South Clark Street, and expect to be back in the Board Chambers for our next regular meeting on February 27th. At this time, I would like to welcome Dr. Carlos Escoitia as our newest board member. Carlos, it is exciting to bring on another lifelong educator to the Board. For over 30 years, Carlos has served the students of the Chicago Public Schools as a teacher, principal, and administrator. He currently serves as distinguished professor of practice and education leadership at National Lewis University. Welcome, Carlos. Would you like to say a couple words?
Thank you. It's really an honor to serve and to join this Board so we can provide quality educational opportunities for every school community, including students, teachers, and families. I started my teaching career in the Chicago Public Schools, and it's a commitment for life. Thank you for this honor.
Thanks, Carlos, and welcome again. Next, I would like to note that our shadow student joining us today is Camila Mischechak. You will also note that our honorary board member, Marquis, is not with us today. Marquis is attending to academic requirements at his school today, so appropriately, he's prioritizing his schoolwork before being here. And so normally, Marquis would introduce our shadow student, but today I'll ask our Board Secretary to do so. Stella?
And thank you, Mr. President. So Camila Mischechak is currently a junior at Lane Tech College Prep High School. Camila is the Vice President of the Student Council and a member of the Key Club. She has also participated in the University of Chicago Collegiate College Program and is on the Social Committee and the Art Institute Teen Council. Welcome, Camila.
Thank you, Ms. Beltran, for that wonderful introduction and for so kindly welcoming me here. Thank you so much to President Vitale and to all the board members for graciously having me here today. I am very grateful for this unique opportunity to see democracy in action and will definitely gain valuable insight into public works. And thank you to my principal, Dr. Christopher Dignum, for his much appreciated support. Thank you.
Thank you, Camila. We enjoy having you with us today. And with that, Madam Secretary, would you please lead us in the place?
Thank you, Mr. President.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
The regular meeting of Wednesday, January 23rd, 2013 is hereby called to order. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. President. Dr. Escoitia?
Present.
Dr. Beenan?
Here.
Vice President Reese?
Here.
Dr. Hines?
Here.
I'd like to note that board members up will be joining us a little bit later, and President Vitale?
Here.
Five members present. There is a quorum. Thank you. I'd also like to note for the record our attendance of our Chief Executive Officer, Dr. Barbara Bird Bennett, our General Counsel, James Bebley, and our shadow student this month, Camila Mischechak. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. We will now begin with honoring, our honoring excellence segment of the meeting. And this month, we would like to congratulate students from Washington High School who took first place in the Cooking Up Change Chicago Contest. They were among 14 They were among 14 Chicago Public Schools that competed. The event was launched in 2007 as part of the Healthy Schools Campaign to engage student chefs, student chefs, student chefs, to create a great lasting lunch that meets nutrition standards on a tight budget using only ingredients commonly available for school food service. They are accompanied this morning by their principal, Principal Kevin Gallagher. Kevin, would you like to say something?
Sure. First of all, thank you very much for providing Washington with the opportunity to showcase ours talents. I'd just like to thank you for inviting us here and present our team leader and teacher, Ty Sellers, and she'll introduce the project and our students. Thanks.
Good morning, Mr. President and rest of members of the Board. Thank you so much again for having us. This is such a tremendous opportunity for the students from a small south side neighborhood, not only to represent a neighborhood school, but more importantly, Chicago Public Schools at large, and to really have a voice in saying what they will eat in their schools. Healthy meals, nutritious meals that are also favorites for the students. And today we have Karen Rivera, Leon Sanchez, Marina Nava, Vanessa Arnold, and Leonard Gutierrez, two seniors, four, five, three juniors, and they will be representing us in June at the national competition in Washington, DC.
All right. Thank you very, very much.
And if we could, we'd like each student just to say just a little something to the Board. Thank you.
I'd like to start off with saying hi, and we're excited to be here, and we're excited to go to DC.
We all wish you great luck, I'm sure.
Just, we are really excited to go to DC and just to represent CPS and George Washington High School. And hopefully, we win and we could say that we are from Chicago and we won.
You can pull that down.
I think all of us could say that we're very help, like, healthy, like, happy to be here in front of all of you and show such our hard work, and it's paying off right now, like, just being in front of you guys.
Thank you.
I'd just like to thank you guys for giving us the opportunity to be here. Like, we wouldn't have made it this far if it wasn't for, you know, our chef, for helping us, everything, and, you know, we're gonna be excited to go to DC.
So thanks again. For those of you who aren't familiar, Washington is a neighborhood high school on the furthest south side, almost touching Indiana. And so we encourage everybody to come and join us. We really want to make public everything that we're doing. And so come out, come see the wonderful things we're doing. Culinary excellence is one of the things. Thank you.
Well, congratulations. Good luck. We're very proud to have you represent us in the competition. We're sure you'll come back a winner, but you're a winner in our eyes. I have only one regret. We didn't ask you to prepare lunch today.
Yes.
Maybe another time. Thank you very, very much, and congratulations to you all, and good luck.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Hi, David. I was one of the judges that day, and I could just say, it was fierce competition, and it was great, and it was a great job to be a judge that day. Thank you.
Now, I'd like to ask our CEO, Barbara Bird Bennett, to continue with acknowledgement of the National Board Certified Teachers Program and recognition of our Community Action Councils. Barbara?
Thank you so much, President Vitale. As a former member of the Board of the National Board for Performance, for Professional Teaching Standards, I am particularly honored today to recognize our Chicago Public School teachers who take pride in their professionalism. And for many people who are not in the audience, have no idea how difficult and how challenging the process is. We're fortunate, as a district, to have these dedicated teachers, among so many who have worked hard to improve their own pedagogy by implementing the most effective teaching practices to promote our students' learning. I'm proud to say that in 2012, Chicago Public School teachers ranked first, I want to say that again, first in the nation in being awarded National Board Certifications. We have 180 CPS teachers who earned the National Board Certification from the National Board of Professional Teaching Standards last year, and more than any other school district in the nation. Board Certification is a, is predicated on a performance-based, peer-review process that accesses both pedagogical skills and content knowledge. So, Chicago Public Schools today, we employ over 1,700 nationally-board certified teachers, including 68 who have gone on to become principals and assistant principals, 17 who are instructional leaders in the networks, and one board-certified teacher who is now a network chief. So today, it is my privilege sincerely, and my honor, as a teacher, as a mom, and the people that you teach, how they, how you affect their lives, to honor the excellent work of Patricia Felkton, a teacher of the diverse populations at Fermi Elementary, Cory Schifrin, I want to make sure I'm saying it right, social studies teacher at Mitchell Elementary, and Mauricia? Mauricia. Dantez, elementary teacher at Marquette School of Excellence, who are here with us today. I know that I speak for everyone in our system, including our Board and the members of our city, that we are so pleased with your dedication, your professionalism, and your commitment to the academic success of your students. It's inspiring to all of us. And on a special note of congratulations to the CTU President, Karen Lewis, who renewed, I know she renewed her Board Certification for another 10 years, I believe it is. So congratulations to Karen, who's not here, but importantly, to our teachers who are here.
So once again, my name is Patty Freckleton, and I teach first and second grade Special Education at Enrico Fermi Elementary. Thank you so much, Mr. President, and the members of the Board of Education for this honor today. I'm truly grateful and humbled to be here. As a National Board Certified Teacher, I now think more deeply about my teaching and my students' learning. The two biggest questions of National Boards are, why did you teach that, and how do you know your students are learning? National Boards has been the single most important factor in helping me grow from being a good teacher to a great teacher. By always answering these two questions when planning and reflecting on my instruction, I am now a more purposeful and effective practitioner. For this, I would like to thank the Chicago Teachers Union for running such an amazing National Board Support Program. The professional development and mentorship that I received through nurturing teacher leadership was second to none, and I am so grateful to have been a part of the National Boards, the best National Board Support Program in the country. I would also like to thank the members of the Board of Education for now helping fund the NTL Program through the CTU so that more teachers can achieve National Board Certification. I would also like to thank my colleagues and my principal, Dr. Sanders, who is with me today, for supporting me throughout this process. Once again, thank you for having me here today.
Good morning. I'd like to thank all of you for having us here for this recognition. The National Board Certification process has been an incredible experience for me. It has helped me grow as a teacher and to be more reflective in my practice. This experience allowed me to collaborate with other amazing teachers throughout the district and learn from the wealth of their acknowledge, of their knowledge and their experiences. The NTL Program provided meaningful professional development in a variety of different areas that allowed me to expand my knowledge in teaching and try new things that I hadn't tried before and perfect some of the things that I'd been doing to make me a better teacher. I really appreciate all the support that the Board has given and in supporting this program, and hope that we can continue encouraging Chicago teachers to do, go through this process.
Hello. Thank you again, President Vitale and Board members. My name is Mauricia Dantez, and I'm a third grade teacher at Marquette School of Excellence, and I am truly honored to be here today, and especially honored because you are addressing and honoring a certification program that means so much to our profession. I stand before you today a better teacher, a more informed teacher, a totally different teacher. Every teaching move that I make now is rooted in research and things that I've learned through this national certification process. I am affecting change in my children. I see it every day. I see a huge change in my teaching practice compared to years before. So I am especially grateful to nurturing teacher leadership for their outstanding professional development because I learned many things about myself as a person which truly informs my teaching in the classroom. So I want to say thank you again to the Board and nurturing teacher leadership and continued support from the Board. Thank you so much.
The Chicago Public Schools belong to the citizens and the communities of Chicago, and the success of our students and our schools rests largely on the support of empowered and engaged communities. As the Chief Executive Officer, I've had the opportunity to work closely with the District Community Action Councils and have been inspired by their work, their creativity, and the dedication. The Community Action Councils serve as a vehicle of empowerment for CPS families and community members who desire to make a positive impact on their local schools and provide a forum for members of the CPS communities to develop strategies to provide and improve, improve the schools. Council members include parents, elected officials, faith leaders, local school council members, business leaders, educators, administrators, community leaders, and students, all together working to develop and implement strategic plans for educational success of the communities. Today, it is truly an honor for Chicago Public Schools to formally recognize Chicago's Community Action Councils for their significant and remarkable role in the district's improvement and the establishment of guidelines to optimize our working relationship. Going forward, the CACs will meet approximately once a month, and all meetings will be attended by CPS officials who can provide data and updates on key district strategies and initiatives related to the local schools within the neighborhoods of each of the individual CACs, Community Action Councils. As the CEO, I will respond to the council plans and determine how best to integrate them into our overall plan. The Community Action Councils provide a critical pathway for meaningful collaboration between schools, communities, organizations, families, and the central office. It is a model for the nation. I am pleased to present the proclamations to each of the CAC chairs. And I am looking for the proclamations. Do you have, okay. Thank you.
Well, good morning. I'm Alderman Deborah Graham and the Chair of the Austin Community CAC, and we are so honored to be here for this recognition. We have so longed to partner with the Board, and thank you so much for allowing us to just share our thoughts. We have worked long and hard for the past two years to present the ideas of how we want our schools to be shaped in our community, and I'm just delighted and we're honored for the recognition. We have worked hard to produce the reports, and we are proud of the reports that we've produced because they did not come through kumbaya. We worked hard, we struggled for what we wanted, and we're proud of the struggle that we had to produce those reports, and we're happy that you're recognizing the work of the CACs on this morning. So thank you so very much this morning.
I'd like to thank President Vitale and Dr. Bennett. The CAC has been given life. It's a great concept. It gives an opportunity for the Board to interface with the, with respective communities across the city. It's, sometimes it's challenging, but, but, through the process, we come up with good, quality answers and solutions to some of the problems that we face. So we look forward to going, going, going forward. It's not, it's gonna be a challenge because we're gonna challenge you, and, and hopefully you will challenge us. And so that at the end of the day, that the kids will benefit from that process. We have to listen to each other, we have to respect each other's responses, and I think if we do that, we'll begin to see the kind of, we'll be able to bring about the kind of changes that we need in our schools. Again, thank you, and we appreciate, and, and thank you, the Board, for embracing this concept, because I think we're gonna get a lot of mileage out of this. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Idita Perez, and I am the Chair of the Humboldt Park CAC. And again, I just want to thank you and let you know how we deeply appreciate the recognition. We've been working hard for two years, and the first year was hard planning, and the second year, we, we went ahead and just started with implementation because we didn't know where you were gonna go. So we've already started on some wonderful projects. Thank you very much for the IB program over at Clemente. We're now working with the feeder schools to prepare them, to prepare their students to go into the IB Clemente High School. But again, just thank you very much for the recognition, and I look forward to continuing to work with you, Barbara, and Mr. President, and CPS. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Nona Bernie, and I'm the newly-elected Chair of the Bronzeville Community Action Council. Two Board Presidents, Board Members, and the CEO from same place with a lake and a river at one time. This is really the 25th year, almost, of the Chicago Public Schools Reform, if anybody remembers that. LSC is being a really strong model of democratizing public education by including parents in the decision-making. And so, as a member of the Bronzeville Community Action Council, we want to thank you for another authentic process that has been added to engage the community and, and particularly the community in the broadest sense of the word. Chicago is always in the vanguard, it seems, when it comes to public education, and so we expect that people will be emulating this process as well. Again, thank you for the opportunity to transform public education, especially for the children in our respective communities.
I just wanted to also add to hats off to all of the CAC members, all of the co-chairs, everyone who has participated with all of their passion and all of their love for all of our children across the city of Chicago.
So Alderman and, and CAC leaders and CAC members, on behalf of the Board, you know, we are all volunteers up here, as are all of you, so we really understand and appreciate the commitment you make on a voluntary basis to make your community and schools better. It's really a valuable service that you're providing to your neighborhoods and to your kids, and the kids in your neighborhoods. And I just got to tell you, we really do appreciate your effort and your work. And you know, it, it is part of our responsibility to be challenged, so it's okay. You should challenge our thinking about what we should be doing in your communities, and we welcome it. We don't, we're embracing that by embracing you and the work that you do. So thank you very much for all of your effort and all of your work, and we look forward to working with you as we go forward. We really do appreciate it.
President Vitale, I'd also like to, I think it's appropriate for me to, to mention the hard work and the dedication and always keeping me on the path of recognition to Phil Hampton, who just like, just said, Barbara, we gotta do this, and he just made it happen, and for all of the support that he provides in our communities on behalf of the district. Thank you, Phil. Thank you so much. Thank you again. Thank you very much.
Thank you all again. We look forward to working with you. We will now proceed with the business portion of our meeting, and we'll start with the report from our CEO, Dr. Bird Bennett. Barbara?
Thank you. I'd like to begin by extending my sincere gratitude to Mr. Frank Clark, the Chair of the Commission on School Utilization, and to each member of the Commission for the remarkable time, diligence, and commitment they've contributed to this important work thus far. I'd also like to share my appreciation to all of the members of the CPS community who have participated in the Commission's 10 public meetings to date. The ideas and concerns from the Commission that they have presented are integral in our success as we handle the utilization challenges moving forward. As we prepare to move into Phase Two of this important work in the coming weeks, with the second series of community meetings beginning next Monday, January 28th, I appreciate this opportunity, President Vitale and members of the Board, to respond to the recommendations presented in the interim report and outline our strategies for dealing with our utilization challenge moving forward. The Commission's interim report included nine specific recommendations. First, the Commission recommended that all district high schools be removed from consideration for closing or consolidation. I concur with this assessment. The safety and security of our students is a primary concern, and closing or consolidating high schools could potentially result in students traveling further, being forced to cross gang boundaries, and potentially being placed in harm's way. Therefore, we will remove high schools from considerations in our efforts to address our utilization challenge, except in cases of, where the facilities propose a threat to the safety of our students and/or staff, and that is due to perhaps dilapidation state of the facility. We cannot justify the cost associated with making safe environments for our children. In such instances, we therefore reserve the right to remove those students into a building that provides a safer environment. Second, I agree with the Commission's recommendation not to close any Level 1 schools. Our goal is for all of our schools in every neighborhood to be high-performing. High-performing schools that are underutilized present an opportunity to provide students from severely underperforming schools with a higher-performing option, and this is a strategy that we will pursue. Third, I agree with the Commission's recommendation not to close underutilized schools that are in the progress of adding grades. Schools that are growing over time by adding grades must be given the opportunity to reach efficient utilization while ensuring high-quality instruction for students. It would undermine the goal of expanding performing options for our students if we were to change our approach midstream. The Commission's fourth recommendation was not to close or consolidate any underutilized schools serving more than 600 students. While I agree with this concern, each school should be considered on its own merits based on the school's ability to meet the needs of its students. Schools, should school actions be necessary for a school containing over 600 students, we will be responsive and considerate of the complexities of the transition of these students. It will further allow us engagement with our CACs. The Commission further recommended that schools that are close to efficient utilization not be closed, and over the course of the next several weeks, my team and I will review the current and forecast data for schools with a range between 70% and 79% utilization to ensure the best possible long-term options and outcomes for our students. The Commission recommended that those underutilized schools that have recently experienced a significant school action not be closed. I appreciate the chance to more thoughtfully and appropriately consider this point, and over the next few weeks, I will work with my team to characterize this descriptor and to access important information about the students and the families who have previously been through a school action process. Additionally, the Commission recommended that underutilized Level 2 schools, which are on the rise, not be closed. I agree that schools that have clearly illustrated an ability and a potential to improve the outcomes for our students should be given the opportunity to continue that work, and over the next several weeks, my team and I will define and quantify what it means for a school to be on the rise, and then we will assess and evaluate those schools carefully prior to any action. The Commission recommended that we develop creative solutions to deal with the 61 overcrowded schools, elementary schools in our district, and I accept and appreciate this citation. It will further require the best thinking of the entire community, city agencies, and external external partners to solve this issue. The Commission recommended that CPS hold charter-operated schools in the same standards to which it holds district-run schools. I agree with this unequivocally. CPS will hold all schools, including charter, contract, and district-run schools, to the same standard. We intend to place underperforming charters on a watch list, and we will take action soon to close such underperforming schools. And finally, as the Commission has recommended and as we move forward, we are determining and ascertaining our capability to, and our capacity, to undertake this huge process of schools' consolidations. I am more confident than ever at the last briefing of my team that we are taking incredibly deep dives into what I call the five transition buckets to ensure the safety, the consistency, and the sustainability of our processes we move forward. Therefore, the Commission's recommendation for us to assess our capability to handle the transitions and consolidations will be considered greatly. But I do want to underscore that as early as yesterday, at a briefing with our team, I am much more confident than I was 30 days ago that we do have the capacity and the capability, and we will explore that further. I would like again to extend my thanks and appreciation to all the members of the Commission and the public for their thoughtful commitment, time, and effort. I have led school districts across this country, and without a doubt, the most comprehensive, transparent, and extensive community engagement process is the one that will yield us the greatest benefits. And we will continue with the direction of this board to engage in such a transparent process. Next, it is my pleasure to introduce Chicago Public Schools Chief Transformation Officer, Todd Babbitts, who will walk us through some of the processes that our district is using to examine our current and projected future school utilization rates.
Thank you, Dr. Bird Bennett, President Vitale, and members of the board. Here to speak to you today about our effort to realign our facility's footprint for the next generation of Chicago's children. I want to start with what we aspire to deliver for each of our students. It's vibrant schools that prepare all of our students for college, career, and life, providing warm, safe, and dry buildings that create positive learning environments, rigorous, well-rounded instructional programs that support the needs of all of our students, and committed and effective school leaders, teachers, and staff, along with engaged and empowered families and communities. I don't think anybody would find those statements to be controversial. We do face a stark and sobering reality. We have a $1 billion budget deficit for fiscal year 14, and that is not a short-term budget gap, but something that we foresee lasting year over year unless there are significant changes to our revenue streams and our cost base. We have significant population drops in our city that have created severely underutilized About half of our schools are underutilized. Approximately 140 of them are, by our estimates, half-empty. And we have, we do not have unlimited resources. We've gotta face the long-term challenges with respect to our budget. Right now, we simply have too many buildings, given the number of children we have enrolled at some parts of the city, areas where our overall population has declined, or has aged substantially, communities that are now filled with old people, and it has been stretching our limited resources too thinly. It limits our ability to provide resources for the full academic offerings that are essential to student success, things that the community has been demanding: more access to art programs, music programs, and libraries, new technology and intervention services for the children who need them most. It limits our ability to provide facilities and construct expansions to relieve overcrowding in other parts of the city, and it increases the likelihood of split-grade classrooms, which can be an impediment to providing children with a higher-quality education. And we believe that by rightsizing the district's footprint, we'll be able to better redirect our limited resources and invest in programs that are going to give all of our students a more well-rounded, high-quality education that they deserve. I'd like to address quickly how we got there. The primary driver has been a significant drop in our population over the last 10 years. Although we've had some pockets of population growth, overall, we've experienced a very significant decline in our school-age population. There are today 145,000 fewer children age 0 to 19 living in the city of Chicago than there were approximately 10 years ago. It's a 17% decrease. And while there's been a lot of debate in the public back and forth regarding the 145,000 number and whether the number we should be anchored on is something lower, the reality is that both our population and our enrollment numbers have declined substantially. Our enrollment has declined at a somewhat lower rate. We've expanded our pre-K offerings. We have fewer students that are opting into private schools, especially given the current economic state. And we've been improving our graduation rates over time. So when we look at the changes in our enrollment, it's a decline of about 35,000 students, a 9% decline between the years 2002 and 2012. Whether you use 35,000 as your number or 145,000 as your number, the reality is that we have fewer students today, and whichever number you pick masks the variability in population growth and decline in different parts of the city. We have areas where the population decline is far greater than any of those percentages that I have just mentioned. And when you map the decline in enrollment against the decline in population, which is what you see on the page that's being displayed on the screen, you see a very strong correlation between the overall population decline and the changes in our enrollment numbers. The reality is, any way you look at it, the population has declined overall, and we've got a lot of our buildings in our footprint that are not filled sufficiently to scale. We've also taken a finer look at this. Some argue it's not population alone that's causing the problems that we face. And they're right, it's not the only factor. But the population trend is the overriding factor. The other factor, which is less pronounced, has to do with our choice system. Today, more than we used to have, we have students opting into schools other than their neighborhood school. Many of those are also district-operated schools. Some of them are charter schools. And we've taken, undertaken additional analysis to take a deeper look at the areas of our city that are, as a whole, underutilized, to better understand the root causes. And what I'm showing on the screen may be a little bit difficult for people in the back of the room to see and read, but I'll do my best to describe it. What we see is that in underutilized areas of our city, approximately 2/3 of the neighborhood elementary school enrollment decline is due to the decrease in the CPS population. Those are the first two bars that you see in red. The next three bars break down the change in choice being exercised in our district. And so what you see is 65% of the enrollment decrease having to do with a decrease in the CPS population. The other factor, a smaller one, has to do with student mobility and the exercise of choice. Less than 20% has to do with students opting into charter schools. In fact, the charter schools account for less than 15% of the excess capacity in our underutilized areas. And it's also important for everybody to realize that our charter schools have brought on needed capacity in areas of our overcrowding. The underutilization has impacts in our classroom. This isn't entirely about the economic savings that one can get from closing some schools. Underutilization is not good for our students. As one example, what we've found is that in schools that are underutilized, when our schools are not at scale, there's an increased likelihood that our classrooms will have split grades, that is, classrooms that have students of more than one grade level. We find a higher likelihood of split-grade classrooms, and ironically, at least seemingly, more prevalence of classrooms of 35 students or greater in homerooms of our underutilized schools. The more underutilized, you'll see a difference here in our, in our rooms that are, schools that are below 50% utilized versus those 50 to 80% utilized, the more underutilized, the more likely this is to occur. The smaller, underutilized schools have less discretionary funding for additional supports and programs, for additional teachers, interventions, technology, and so they have to make difficult Now, as we go about our work, we have brought to bear what I understand to be unprecedented rigor for this district in examining the issues of underutilization and potential school closures. I can assure you that we're setting a very high bar for our team. Under our CEO's leadership, we have an independent body advising us, the Commission on School Utilization, which has provided important and independent input into our process. We're also involving the community far more deeply, and have been seeking input at the front end of our process, which is a change from prior years. And we're looking at data on several dimensions. We're examining, and will continue to examine, things such as our enrollment trends, not just the numbers currently enrolled, but also historical and projected numbers. We've been looking at the percentage of students attending a school that are actually coming from that school's neighborhood. We're taking a look at access to higher-performing academic options, which involves the performance levels and trends of nearby schools, whether those nearby schools have space to accommodate all of the students that may come from a school potentially closing. It would be preferable, we believe, that for every school that closes, that there would be one welcoming school. It won't be possible in all cases, most likely, but it would be a preference. Safety and security is, of course, of paramount performance. And so what I mentioned before, we're taking a look to see what percentage of the students are coming from that neighborhood. We're also looking more precisely at where those students actually live, looking at the presence of natural barriers that may pose impediments to routes to school, and we're looking at our best understanding, along with CPDs, of gang and neighborhood conflicts. And we're also looking at building quality. What are the expected costs to maintain and update the buildings that we have over the next 10 years? What is the extent and level of ADA accessibility? What recent improvements have been made to those schools? And do the buildings that those schools are in have the qualities that our parents and communities demand, things like air conditioning, and playgrounds, and libraries, and technology? We also have principals going through a process whereby they are validating how space in the buildings that they are currently in are actually being used. We've asked all of our elementary school principals to review all of their instructional space, provide us with additional insight into how each specific space is being used. And this is gonna help us better understand and account for the educational offerings and the supports that currently are available, and better enable us to develop robust plans to strengthen our schools going forward. We've also begun work on transition planning, and by no stretch is this work done. But it's our vision that on the first day of school year 2013-14, that all students attending welcoming schools will experience a safe and a seamless transition. Every teacher and staff member needs to be provided with the supports they themselves need to make a successful transition. And it's also our vision that every community is involved and engaged and understands the issues and the opportunity, and becomes an active supporter of our welcoming schools, their students, teachers, and staff. Now, our transition planning is going to be multifaceted, addressing the needs of all key constituents. But I wanted to highlight three key priorities for us. So one is higher-performing options for students and families. We are committed to providing every student a higher-performing welcoming school, and also to provide families an understanding of how they could access other options. Second, robust student support transition plans. Safety and security will be paramount, but it goes well beyond safety and security. We'll be establishing individual student plans to incorporate instruction, social and emotional supports, and other student needs. And we will be taking to another level our ability and our diligence to monitor and track student progress over time. And then third, I wanted to highlight building reutilization. We have heard loudly and clearly from communities concern about how these buildings will be used, if they're vacated as a result of this process. It is going to require an inter-agency and, inter-agency planning, along with our communities. We'll be collaborating with our CACs, our LSCs, and other community members in order to understand building needs and requirements for those communities, and understand how best to position them for success. And I wanted to end with what we consider success to be, the report card we'll be giving to ourselves. We hold our students and our staff to high expectations, and we hold ourselves to high expectations as well. We very much expect and need to fulfill our promises to students, providing the supports that will create the rigorous learning environments that we desire for them, to provide a positive climate and cultural support, and to give students and families a voice through their welcoming school choice. We need to resource efficiently and effectively invest in the welcoming schools to maximize those supports, and we need to deliver resources and support to the schools to ensure the safe and positive learning environment. And then finally, as indicated earlier, we need to take great responsibility for the use of those closed buildings with thorough and specific plans. In some instances, the expectation is that some buildings may be sold, ideally to uses that the community is excited about, and in other cases, there may be instances for reuse of those buildings for other government agencies or other purposes. Regardless, we want those buildings to be going to their highest and best use, and, at the same time, position CPS in a better financial position moving forward so that we can focus our resources more directly.
Thank you, Todd. Any questions for Todd or Barbara on this subject? Andy?
Jesse.
Ladies first.
I was gonna let the vice chair go first.
You mentioned on page 10, I think was the slide, that students would be going to higher-performing schools. Is that something that we're, we're almost going to guarantee across the board at first, that first column?
Yeah, so...
And how do you define how we're performing?
So we will be providing every student who's impacted by action the option to enroll in a higher-performing school. It is imperative to us, from a values perspective, it is also required by law that we provide Parents do have choice in this system, however. So we will provide them the option to enroll in a higher-performing school, and designated welcoming schools will be higher-performing as defined by the CEO's guidelines. Parents may opt to go elsewhere. We will do what we can to counsel parents with respect to their options and identify which schools we think are higher-performing.
Good. I mean, so is this something that we consider, or something I've always, I know, have challenged you all on, is what's the value proposition for families here in terms of what are they losing versus what are they getting? And so, this to me would be a valuable opportunity that you get a better educational outcome or prospect. Do you agree? Is that pretty much the goal?
I absolutely agree. In all cases, we are hoping to provide students with a higher-performing academic option that is better resourced, both in the short and long term.
And then one, one other quick point, it was that you mentioned earlier, with regard to charters, and saying that a lot of the charters we've put have been put in areas to alleviate overcrowding where we have, you know, it's the kind of the tale of two cities, where in some parts of the city we have severe overcrowding, and other parts, we've got underutilized schools. Is that gonna continue to be the trend and the goal of how we're utilizing these additional capacity we're putting into the system?
Excuse me, yes, yes, it is.
Thank you. Andy, and then Henry.
So I have a different question, but I just need to follow up on that, because I just think it's really important that we be very careful about... just think it's really important that we be very careful about what we say and how we say it. So, Todd, you just said, "We intend to make sure that every, we're obligated to make sure that everyone that's impacted has access to or the option of enrolling in a higher-performing school." So we should be clear that that higher-performing school may or may not be in their neighborhood, right?
So, as we're going, as, you know, we are taking advice from the Commission on School Utilization. Concurrent with that, we've done some internal thinking. And one of the things that's important to us, as we think about the problem, is the degree to which a student would need to travel to a higher-performing option. We have some areas, let's say, in certain parts of the city where our schools are pretty far spread apart, and it would be difficult to close a school because it would be very, very challenging to provide students with a good nearby option. So, that is different from other parts of the city where we have schools more closely clustered.
But we also have areas of the city where we don't have higher-performing options. And so, I just, I'm concerned about us making promises that when we restate them to the community will be stated a little differently. So, I, to be honest with you, I don't know how you're going to do what you just said if it's a neighborhood school. And so, I want you to just be, I just, I'm not saying it's wrong or right, I just want to be clear so that when we come back to the community, they don't come back and say, "But at the board meeting, you said X." So, higher-performing option, yes, we're obligated to do that, but it does not have to be a neighborhood school, right? And it may or may not be what people would consider a neighborhood school. That may just be what we're forced to do, unless I'm missing something.
No, you're correct. And as you will recall, one of the important parts of our organization's structure now is the Office of School Strategic Supports. We recognize that in many of our communities, for too long, our neighborhood schools have been, just left, and there has been no academic excellent push for those schools. So if a parent does not make a choice to go to a school that would be considered outside of their community, the question for us, which we are working through right now, is what are the options that we provide in that neighborhood to shore up, support, and move that neighborhood school on the trajectory that we would want for all of our children? And that does include often, and we've been taking a deep look at this, wraparound services, class size, technology, arts integration. It takes, it provides us the opportunity and a challenge to take a look at those clusters of underperforming schools in our neighborhoods, and ask the question of ourselves, now what do we do? And as we make this deeper dive, that's the question that our team is striving with now, and we will have in our community meetings that start on Monday, that's a part of a very deep conversation that we would expect and welcome input from the community. We've also gotten input from our CACs in some of their plans that have presented, been presented to us. But unilaterally, right now, you're absolutely correct. We cannot say that in every neighborhood, a parent can go to a neighborhood school that is of a higher quality option, because it often places, it simply does not exist at this time.
Right. And that second part, Dr. Bird Bennett, was the point I was trying to get to, which is that we also need to talk to the communities about how we're going to get, right? How are we going, we may not have it this spring or in the fall, but we were, what are we going to do to try and get there, okay?
Correct.
So my second question really is, when will we have some idea of your, of the timeframe? So in other words, when are we going to get to some clarity on when we will be providing more information to people about the process, about the, just so that people have some idea of where we're headed? And people know the March 31 date, they know legally what we're obligated to do after that, but in between now and March 31st, you've got a lot on your plate, and when will people know what that timeline is?
So our anticipation is that effective January 28th, when the first of the deep dive, community dives, and conversations take place, and there will be multiple meetings in each of the networks, that by the 13th of February, we anticipate that we're going to have far greater specificity around what our situation looks like, and far further specificity around which of the schools are now really under a microscope for consideration by this board.
Okay, thank you.
Henry?
I want to congratulate Todd and his colleagues on the analysis, because I think it's a very useful one. And I think, in particular, there have been two somewhat controversial points which really are explained here. One is the paradox of large classrooms in underutilized schools, which is now laid out. And two, and some of this is in the appendix, Todd, which you didn't even have time to or didn't go into, in the written materials that I have in front of me, which has been the impact of charters on utilization. And I don't know whether this is going to be available to people, the last couple of pages you, for some reason, you didn't discuss, but they go into a little more depth on the impact of charters, which has been pretty modest in terms of utilization issues. Hasn't been zero, but it certainly doesn't account for even anything like 20%. I think it's under 15% or something like that.
Underutilized areas, we think it accounts for about 15% of the excess.
Charles?
Yes. I've always thought that the advantage of being connected to city government is to try to partner, especially to provide the services that affect learning and affect students. And I notice in this plan, the building reutilization, how are we going to approach that as we partner with other city agencies and community organizations to provide that level of support?
And I'll let Todd. Right now, we have, are attempting to calendar the opportunity to meet with, obviously, other city organizations so that that conversation can be had. It is our end goal that the collaboration between those partner intergovernmental agencies will be able to come up with creative ways for building usage, and we think more importantly that once that is had, those conversations are also deeply rooted in neighborhoods, so that we get not only the intergovernmental agencies, but also community agencies from bottom up and top down, trying to figure out what a respectable and what a profitable and beneficial use of those buildings might be in a given neighborhood.
Will this task be part of the commission, or would be followed through, through the community action councils and local school councils?
It is not a part of the commission's work. We've not charged the commission with that work. Clearly, the community action councils have already, in many of their reports, provided us recommendations and thoughts. Conversations I've had with Alderman, they've provided us recommendations and thoughts, and conversations that we will be having with, you know, with City Hall, with the police, with all of our intergovernment agencies, will provide us with a resource and database that helps to inform the future possibilities and uses for those buildings.
Thank you.
Henry, and then Jesse.
I wanted to say a word about the budget impacts of closures, because people have thrown around in the press, and we've used it ourselves on the board, the Pew Report, which talks about something like $800,000 to $1 million in savings of a particular school closing. But I think it doesn't really show the impact on the budget of school closings in terms of either efficiency or total cost, because some of these buildings that we've had for a very long time, we have a very old housing stock, really require lots of capital renovations going forward. So there are the operating costs on the plant, whatever that is, heat, lighting, and then their repair capital costs, which are, can be very, very extensive over years. And you're talking about both operating costs and capital costs on a year-to-year basis. So it's not a one-time saving of $1 million or whatever that we ought to focus on, but in a very constrained budget situation that we, or at least most of us know and believe, these are really, these are very big savings to the budget, not a one-time $1 million saving. But that's only one part of it. The other, which has gone into it in your analysis, Todd, is the inefficiencies where we have underutilization, and so we're not using teachers efficiently. We have split classrooms, we have under, we are not serving students well in underutilized schools because we don't have all the teacher resources there that we should have by consolidating. So I think on both the efficiency and budget side, there's a huge amount to be said here which isn't captured by the figure of $800,000 or $1 million per school closing.
Thanks, Henry. Hillary?
Yeah. I have more of a comment and a question, and mine is more, I'm more concerned with the transition that takes place for students who are moved, because there has not been really good experiences in the past with many of these students. And I noticed that you said that you were going to recruit and deploy network and school transition teams. I think that this is going to be real important. I'd like to see a plan of how long they're going to be there and what's actually going to happen. When many of the parents have taken advantage of going to schools that were performing better, the culture shock for the parent and the child was not always, it was such that it was not a pleasant experience. And so I think that it's going to be real important how we transition these kids who are moved into other schools, and that the support is not just dependent on the school in many cases where you have new administrators who aren't even capable of making that transition plan. So I would hope that it really comes from the board with the chiefs, with, you know, really thoughtful and consideration for the families and the kids making this transition, because many of them are academically capable, but they're not culturally ready for the transition.
Mr. President, just one comment. As, we have an economic reality, but I also want us to pay attention to the effectiveness of small schools in some cases, because there is a body of research. And I know, you know, the economics of all of this, but in addition to that, we have to see those quality places where their relationships have played a big role in student success.
Yeah, to that point, that is absolutely why we accepted the commission's recommendation for Level 1 schools, which, many of, of which are our small populations.
Jesse?
One last question from me. I know there've been some questions raised about our capacity to handle such a change and with the resources that we have, and can you just talk a little bit further on how you're looking at, what you envision those resources will be, and if we possibly even go outside those four walls of this district to make sure that we have those resources even on a short-term basis, to ensure that we successfully, you know, tackle whatever transition it is we're going to tackle?
I'll speak, and then I may invite Dr. Bird Bennett to fill in, given her experience with school closures in multiple other districts. I think she has a terrific handle on the kind of resources that will be required. The amount of resources here that will be required will, of course, be dependent on the magnitude of the overall effort, which at this point has not been decided. So, it's difficult to give you a read on that today. I can tell you that our planning has started far in advance of where it has historically. We have also been working to catalog lessons learned from prior years, and we understand where things have gone wrong and have corrective actions in place. So we know that in the past, we have not done a terrific job at tracking our students and understanding their outcomes. That will be addressed this year. Last year, we did have some issues with our warehouse and the transfer of personal belongings and other academic materials. We've learned from those mistakes, and we'll be handling things differently this year. I don't think it will be a question of our resources. I think we've had a step change in our improvement and our understanding of how this can be done successfully with lessons learned here and lessons from other districts. And Barbara, maybe you could fill in based on what you've seen here and your confidence in the plan.
Yeah. So, I think of this and the work that I've done in other places, but more importantly, as Todd has said, to take a look at what we have not done well in Chicago. I take a look at this as in five broad buckets. One, it's the detailed, detailed level of a school closure. And any of us who have been a principal who have worked in a school where you close the school just for June because the school is over and you're closing down, that list can be extensive, but when you close a building permanently, that list is even more extensive. So our checklist or itemized list of all the actions that need to be taken are placed in that first transition for us. The second is the reverse process, when you open a new school and the transition of materials, the blending of discipline plans, safety plans, culture plans, entrance, egress, all of those are really important, detailed considerations that I don't think we paid attention to in the past. To Dr. Hines' question relative to cultural transition, as we look of moving, look, this is not about buildings for me, and I know it is to a lot of people, but it's not. This is about really moving heart, blood, and soul of children and families. And that is, that's delicate, and it must be done with respect, and the kind of nurturing and support that children and families need in that transition, as well as hearing the authentic voice. So that kind of cultural nuance and change in that middle bucket for me is the piece that we're really, really working on to make that as smooth as possible, and that dovetails with providing the kind of individual resources, interventions, and supports that children might need. And when I say intervention, I also mean acceleration. I don't mean necessarily remediation. And then the last is the compliance with the law. We are required to provide an academic transition plan, which is detailed and at the same time nuanced. And so those five buckets are the detailed level of work that our team is now in the process of finalizing. I've reviewed it a couple of times. I will send it as soon as we are finalized for the board, the board's input, so that we don't miss a step. And I'm talking with colleagues, members of the CTU, we're meeting with them and their team, to make certain that those huge transition buckets, that we don't falter.
So it sounds like this will have a bearing on the scope of the transition that will happen, but not necessarily dictate the size of that scope?
I'm sorry, Jesse, I didn't hear you.
I was just trying to confirm my understanding. It sounds like you're saying that this will obviously have a bearing on the scope of the challenge we choose to take on, but it's not going to dictate the size of the scope of the challenge.
Totally, totally, yes.
Okay.
Andy?
Just a couple of things in response to, a couple of things that both of you said that I just think are important to touch on. Todd, you said this is not a resource issue. You know, I know you didn't mean it that way, the way it came out, but I just think it's important to say it is exactly a resource issue. This is not, last year, we were challenged when we did 10 schools, 10. So it is a resource issue, how we deploy them, how we apply them. And I say it not because I think you didn't mean it the way it came out, and I don't want...
What I meant to say is I don't believe that the district lacks the resources in order to do this successfully.
Absolutely. So, but let's be clear that we need to recognize this is a giant step-change activity, and that you understand that, which I know you do, which is why I'm raising it, okay? So that's one. Dr. Bird Bennett, I just, I did not hear on the list of the five things, the receiving schools and the environment in the receiving schools. And I just think it's, it is, yes, this is about the families and the kids, but it's also about the environment in the schools that we create, the new schools, that they will be, the new school environments, and I just think we cannot underestimate that and the impact on the teachers and the principals in those, in both, from the schools that will be closed, as well as the new schools. And again, I know that's something you've talked about, but it wasn't on your list, and I just wanted to give you an opportunity to...
I lost track of the five, I'm sorry, I only did four. But that fifth is precisely what you're talking about, Andy. It is, in some broad sense, the blending of cultures. How do you transition Principal A, Principal B, staff transitions, LSCs transitions, as well as families and children? And so when I mentioned briefly, you know, School A has one discipline policy that creates the ethos and the culture of a school, how do you blend that with school, the receiving school? And so all of those activities, processes are a part of the fifth bucket of the transition, and a part that we are most greatly in consultation with partners throughout the city, but also trying to learn the lessons from other places. I would also add that we are struggling, striving, and will be successful in the level of detail required for the kinds of transitions that we will be making, ultimately making. I'm not sure if that, that level of thought was applicable last year.
Thank you.
Okay, Todd, thank you very much. Appreciate the update, and we look forward to your continued work. Appreciate it.